All the meeting together at 5:30 so we can get in and out. That's what Mr. Garrett said was start at 5:30 so. And Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Sagara is not present. We will now open it up with citizen comments. I do not have any forms. Now we would discuss item number DS-25-088. Receive briefing and tour of Bellton Water Treatment Plant, 5200 Water Works Road. The meeting is open. And we will turn it over to our presenter. Sir, your name please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Terry Dodson. I'm the Executive Vice President of Arpower based out of the Woodlands in Montgomery County. Our company provides resilient generation for commercial, industrial, and municipal loads within the state. We're doing a project here at the Bellton Water Plant here for Bell County. I'm just going to go through the details of what the project is and kind of give you kind of a summary of where we're at. Last December, Bell County WCID #1 decided to execute a contract for 10 megawatts of backup generation. They went through the RP process and selected Arpower to do that job. We started off with performing two tasks. Getting the generation block installed at the facility and installing a six-inch natural gas pipeline along the existing right-of-way that Bell County had from a previous line that was built in the 50s. The extension is about two miles long, and we'll go through the details of that in just a minute. So far to date, we've done all the kickoff for the major generation project task and then getting the equipment orders done. We've completed the 30% engineering package and also completed the 100% engineering package that allows us to go ahead and start construction, which is in progress. If you guys drove in along Water Works Road, you kind of saw some construction going on there, some buildup. That's where the main facility is going to be located. The natural gas pipeline extension also went through a scope development engineering phase. Those have been completed. And we've kicked off construction, commissioning of that project. We'll have boots on the ground and probably start digging trenches around the first, second week of July. The backup generation, the 10-megawatt plant you saw here is located pretty much adjacent to the electrical control room and the incoming service from Encore. It's going to be composed of 16 Generac 625-kilowatt natural gas generators housed in two about 100-to-10-foot buildings that will be serviced by switchgear, outdoor transformers, some reclosures to connect it to the 25-kV Encore system, and all the associated cables, conduits, concrete foundations, and the ground grid. The generation banks are pretty much lined up, as you see here. Each one lined up indoors with inlet and exhaust. They'll go through some switchgear, some transformers, and then finally connect up to allow them to serve the load to the facility in the event that Encore's service has lost, but also provide backup generation for the Encore grid in the event that they can synchronize and provide power to backfeed out to their Encore service. The natural gas pipeline extension work is again starting construction. It begins at the middle of a field in which an existing Atmos pipeline is. This is the original tap and meter that was put in in 1955 by the Armored Corps of Engineers to serve the water plant when it served only Fort Hood. That two-inch line has been since abandoned, but we're using the same right-of-way to put in a six-inch polyline to go the entire route to get up to the site. We're going to be putting in about 4,600 feet of base lay open cut. We'll have about 3,100 feet that's going to go through an existing abandoned 14-inch water line from the water tower that's located on Water Works Road all the way up to the site. That 14-inch line became abandoned last year when they replaced it with a 24-inch line. So we're going to take advantage of that and not have to dig up the ground and reuse some pipe that is just laying there abandoned. We're also doing some horizontal direct drilling boars about 2,600 feet of that. We have six boars in which we're going to go underneath Water Works Road to get from one side of the plant to the generation plant. We've got one underneath Wood Lake Circle that crosses up just by Sparta Road, Cedar Cove Road, Sparta Road actually when we cut up to here. And then there's a landowner that has a driveway and a shed that's on the right-of-way, so we're going to go underneath that property as well. And then we'll go under North Nolan Creek, which is a subset of Nolan Creek, to get all the way up to the point where we can tie into the Atmos meter. There'll be two piping risers, one, of course, is the meter station, and then one where the service is being taken up by the generation mark. And of course, the associated pole markers that go along the right-of-way. Again, that work's about to start. We're going to have probably the first trench being dug, starting at the meter here, around July 11th. And then it'll be completed pretty quickly by September. So here's where we are with the schedule for both projects. The backup generator, of course, has been kicked off on equipment orders. Engineering is complete. Construction has started. We'll have 5 megawatts of backup operation by September, which is when the natural gas line is also going to be commissioned. We'll have the remaining other 5 megawatts installed by the December timeframe. And then, once Encore completes all their work, we'll have the synchronous capability to do the synchronous operation by March of next year. The Phase 1, Phase 2 scope engineering for the natural gas pipeline is completed. Face reconstruction is going on. It's starting up there. And again, once again, it's going to be completed around the same time the generation project will be ready to kick off. To date, we've done about 55% of work and charged that much invoice to the project here. Predominantly, this is going to be a construction project, so we've got about 34%, 35% of the work invoiced, with remaining of that going to be the construction and materials being installed. And that was kind of the high-end presentation. I don't want to get into the details of that, so I'm just going to leave it there. If y'all have any questions about where we're at or what we're trying to do here, we certainly can give you a copy of this presentation material if you like that and get you to that point, but we'll give you a signup clipboard if you can sign your name and number to an email address, and we'll get those to you. Are there any questions about what the purpose is and what we're trying to do here?
Yeah, I can kind of clear up on that a little bit more than you have.
The generation actually will provide backup service likely to the entire site for the plant. So in the event that Encore's service is lost, such as the grid eruption that occurred during the freeze when Yuri hit, we'll have a complete backup system that will provide everything, all the water plant operations that continue on as normal if they had normal service. But we'll also be able to synchronize to the grid at normal operation times and be able to help provide service to the grid in the event that the power is needed. We'll be able to actually export whatever power is not being used by the water plant at that time as well.
So is that something that would occur at other times as well? If the grid needs power, we can sell it to them?
Correct.
Do they just call us, or is it...
It's actually done by people that are allowed and permitted to do that through the ERCOT and Public Utility Commission. They'd usually determine that based on the price of the market power and determine whether or not the cost of fuel is going to be covered by the amount of revenue you're going to get from electric generation and do it that way. And those are, that's a real-time operation. So you make that decision that time, turn it on. It's all remote-controlled operated, so you don't really have to do anything but press and play.
So, no, this was a grant. So...
No, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to say, part of, so this is a 14-something-million-dollar project. The region did get a grant from the state of Texas for $5 million. Most of it's credited to Fort Hood, but we got some of the credit. And Judith and Miranda, our finance department, were managing that grant and doing all the pay. They'll send us receipts and we'll, we pay them.
So if this project is something that the city will be doing, if we have a $5 million grant, how will we pay for the remaining amount for the generation?
We budgeted for it. It's out of our rates, and they bill us as the progress of this project goes along.
The project was bonded, so we go through a bonding agent for that purpose, and the county retains 10% of the invoice costs for the first 50% of service charge. So to make sure that that retainage is paid once the project is complete.
And the completion of the project?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the dates or... We'll have the first, majority of it, half of it, sorry, done by this date, and then the rest of it is being finished up in December. That's all based on equipment delivery at the time. The generators are coming in four at a time, so we put those in and marked those up, get the building closed up, get it energized, and get it operating. And then we'll have the next building with the other eight generators installed by December.
What was the lead time on those over a year?
Yes. There's still component problems. Most of the electrical components you buy worldwide are very difficult to get because COVID kind of messed up the supply chain. You're still trying to adapt. So there's a lot of manufacturers that have problems getting the supply out for this kind of demand, especially after the freeze happened when everybody wanted to have generation. So it kind of put a glut on the capability of them serving.
Any other council members have questions?
Okay, that was the, that's with the presentation. Again, if you guys want to sign up and you want to copy this presentation, please put your name and your email address, and we'll make sure we get to one.
Well, Janelle, will you give her your card so we can ask you, the council can get it? Do any citizens want to sign up for the presentation?
Now, I think we get a tour next, but there's another presentation at the end.
Right.
On, okay.
That's over in the other field.
There's some significant projects down there in the plant that are being proposed.
So do you know the time or until we start?
I don't have a schedule. I don't, do y'all have a schedule?
I do. Y'all are doing Plant 2 and 3 from 6:00 to 6:30.
So we're waiting, so the raw water is 6:30 to 7:00. All right, so we're going, if you don't have any questions, we're going to go into recess until it's time for our 6 o'clock tour. All right. Councilors and recess. Got to turn it back on. Yes, sir, we're ready.
Hello, everyone. Thank y'all for coming on this warm, warm, warm day. I'm JD Dominguez, Water Superintendent. This is Scott Tuchek for Bellton. He's the chief operator for this plant, and he will be guiding. And so if y'all will follow him, I will just be behind y'all, guys, just in case y'all have other questions. We're going to visit this particular plant right up here first, and then...
We'll go to Plant 3 first, and then go through Plant 2 because it's on the way to raw water, because raw water's next. So for about the next hour, we're going to be walking out in the sun. So if you want to grab a water, now's the time to do it. All right, I guess everybody's ready?
Yeah.
All right. So from the road here, this is Plant 3. These two round clarifiers and the entry point here at the rapid mix. The filters over here just to the left of the rapid mix. This is all considered Plant 3. To the left of that is Plant 4. TCQ considers them one plant with two trains. So they basically can run together however we want to do it. They can share filters, clear wells, whatnot. But from the road, this is the way it looks. Plant 3 on this side, Plant 4 on this side. Follow me, we'll go upstairs. This cast plaque will tell you when the plant was built. The capacity is 25 million. And these are the people that were involved with this process. Please, everybody, watch your step. There are trip hazards here and there, so step carefully. There's a wooden ramp right outside this doorway, so descend carefully. Just please stay to this side and let this other tour go through here, please.
Maybe.
They're going to exit that way.
You can't park me out here.
I hear the fire alarm. Is that sludge?
Why? Why do you like that?
Well, it's basically when we pump out of the lake, everything, all that silt and everything that's at the bottom of the lake, you know, what fish do in the lake, you know, it's all kinds of sediment, whatever washes in, that's what we take out of the water, and that's what settles down in here.
What do you do if it, when it comes in and settles there? Do you, how you dispose of it?
We drain it to our lagoons, and we de-water it there, and then we land and plow the sludge here on-site.
Thank you. What is it here we're going to learn?
So part of what WCID is proposing is to upgrade this plant. This plant is rated at 25 million, and you can see there's a whole panel missing. You see the rust and deterioration?
Right. The wear and tear of it all.
Yes, just over the years of use and fluorination, it's taking its toll on the metal here.
Right.
So it's, it causes short-circuiting, which makes treatment a little more difficult. But we're still able to make good water and meet all requirements by the state.
So why is it making it difficult?
Because the water doesn't travel the way it's designed to, and it's what we call short-circuiting. It goes another route, so part of the treatment is compromised. We don't get the complete treatment that we want.
But can you not put extra treatment in to make up for that loss?
No.
Okay.
Not, I'm not really sure I understand what you mean by extra treatment, but we do all we can.
Can you double whatever treatment you're putting into it to clean it? Can you double it knowing that there's a short circuit?
Well, we're extra careful with what we do with the water, so there's not a lot we can add more coagulant to settle more out, so it's not as big of a load on the filters. But then again, that's more chemical. That gets more expensive over the years. So ultimately, an upgrade is the best route.
All right, and my last question for a better understanding. If you know you have a short circuit here when the water go through, is there, there is not another area where the water would go through again to purify it even more?
The disinfection is there. It's based on contact time and concentration. So we get the disinfection. We settle out the turbidity, which is all the stuff you see sitting down here that causes the water to have color and...
Right.
And by the time it gets to the filters, the filters pretty much take everything out.
Okay.
So it gets disinfected here, filtered over there, and then it's, it meets all the standards that we have to meet.
Okay.
It's just a little bit harder. We have to work harder to make the water, yes, and it's harder on the plant, so.
So you need a new system?
Yes, absolutely.
Let me ask you this. What is this right here? What are we walking on right, I mean, this, is this filter, is the water?
This, this plant is basically a plant all on its own. And other plants, like when we go to Plant 2, you'll see where you have a rapid mix separate from a flock basin, separate from a sedimentation basin. See, all that is in one structure here.
Okay.
So you have the rapid mix, then you have the flock, and then you have the sedimentation all in this one structure.
You've got two zones.
Yes.
In one.
Yes.
Right, and...
But when you're missing panels, those zones are kind of compromised, and the treatment becomes a little more difficult.
This, this is what needs to be replaced?
Yes.
I see. I'm trying to get it understanding what we're looking at.
Thank you.
When we talk about Plant 3, this is Plant 3.
Got you.
Got you.
So is this the cleaner part from the other part that we just saw?
These are the filters for Plant 3. What I want everybody to see, we talk about the treatment is a little more difficult from this plant here. If you look at these filters here in Plant 3, remember what they look like. When you walk by Plant 4, look through that window and look at that filter and look at the difference between the water that's coming into these filters. Plant 3's filters, we walked by this window, is Plant 4's filters. All right, we're going to make the mad dash through the sun over to Plant 2. Everybody ready?
Woo!
So here we have Plant 2 on this side, Plant 1 on this side. Plant 2 is rated at about 16 million gallons a day. Plant 1 is rated about 14. So these two account for about 30 million of our capacity here. Plant 2, well, I'll start with the rapid mix. Coming up the raw water line, we inject chlorine into the raw water. We get about a few minutes of the best disinfection you can get, which is free chlorine. When it gets here to the rapid mix, we add the alum and the LAS, which is ammonia, and make chloramines here, and the alum is a coagulant to settle out the solids. So that gets mixed here in the rapid mix. You see how fast those rapid mixes are moving? We're trying to get a good mix real fast. Then when it goes to the flock basin, you can see those paddles are moving real nice and slow and easy because we want to still get mixing, but we don't want to shear the flock. We want it to get big and heavy so it'll settle out in the sedimentation basin. Plant 1, its design is called radial flow. Comes up in the middle, radiates to the weirs on the outside edge, and then goes into the settle water channel and then the filters. Plant 2 is what they call laminar flow. Now, when they told me that, I was like, are you trying to say linear flow? And look it up, it's laminar. That means it flows straight. It's not going up and down, side to side, straight. When we get to the end, you have to have so many linear feet of weir, you have to have a certain overflow rate for how much water you're pumping. So you can see how these weirs are nice and straight around the edge. When we get down there, you can see they're, they're going like this, so they get enough linear feet of, to get the overflow rate they need. So let's walk down here and look at it. See how nice and slow these paddles are moving? Plant 1 was built in the 50s. Plant 2 was built in the 60s. These plants are 70, 80 years old, still making water. Nothing lasts forever. The drive over here is one of the things that we need to replace on both these drives in Plant 2. Now, these drives turn rake arms down at the bottom because your, your sludge settles to the bottom. Your rakes move it around at an angle and draw it into a sludge box in the middle, and then we drain the sludge off. So that's how that works. Let's head down to the end.
I'm assuming all the electrical systems need to be upgraded as well, right? Switchgear and...
That's one of the things you're going to hear from CDM.
Okay.
Needs major... That's, that's an excellent question. I should have pointed that out for Plant 3. A lot of that, those breakers don't even exist anymore.
Right, right.
So you can't, you have to retrofit. Even here, we can't just replace these drives here, so old, nobody has them anymore, so it has to be retrofitted, which is more expensive.
Right.
So here's the, the weirs I was talking about.
Wow, look at that.
So that's what they have to do to get the overflow rate they need. If not, it would try and go over the side of the walls, so. But you see that water, it's, it's pretty clear.
This is good water.
Yeah, there's a little bit of flock in it, but this is what we call it settled. So the main turbidity has been settled out, goes into the settle water channel and over to the filters, and then they get filtered down into the clear well, finished water to the customer.
Where are the filters at right now?
They're on the other end. So we'll head back that way.
So this is kind of like, sir, this is what we send to customers, this is finished product.
Yes, sir. After this, it's settle water channel through the filters, state law, all the finished water has to be filtered. So it goes through the filter to the clear well, then pumped out to the customer.
Quick chlorine in the gallon?
No.
Only at the beginning?
Yes.
So that's pretty corny water, isn't it?
Yep.
Very corny.
Yep.
So we have to pour it at a pretty high rate...
Yeah.
...in order to get, to keep the retention tight.
Through the detention tank, yes, sir.
All the way to the...
Yes, sir, all the way to the end.
Yes, sir.
Come on in the shade.
If you get a missed call, just for me, letting you know we were coming.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're done, Tan.
Okay. I didn't know. I didn't see this.
All right, welcome to the raw water station. Here's, here's where we bring the water in from the lake and send it to our plants. This is a significant part of the project improvements that we're seeking. We're looking for a total of about $17 million. The, the switchgear in this building is from 1977, and it, it supplies power to 60 of our 90 million gallons a day of capacity here. Those components are no longer supported, and parts are really hard to find, so we're on borrowed time with that. Half of the 17 million is, is maintenance directly, maintenance-related. Half is capacity-related. So, for example, a couple of our pumps, the switchgear is going to have to be replaced. Actually, it's five or six of them, but on a couple of them, they need to be upsized. We, we asked CDM Smith to scope out all of our major capital needs and see if there was a potential for rerating of our plant. A couple of the entities wanted more capacity now, and so CDM went, and they found that we could re-rate the plant without too much, too much trouble. So they found 6 MGD for a rerating capacity. So the customers that want to participate and get some of that capacity, they're going to pay roughly the same dollar per gallon as what our estimate was previously with the bigger plant expansion. So to do that, we, we need bigger pumps in a couple of places. We're going to need bigger raw water line in a couple of places, things like that. So from here, we're going to go over to the fence, if you'd like to. Once we round this corner, it gets a little more loud, but if you go to the chain-linked fence, you can see the intake out in the lake. You'll see a concrete silo sticking up out of the water. Well, it goes down about 90 feet to the lake bottom, and there's a 330-foot tunnel that connects that silo where our intakes are to a large diameter pipe where these pump cans go down into. They, they tunneled that before Lake Belton was impounded. That work was going on while the dam was being built. The Corps of Engineers built that. That part of the operation doesn't need any enhancements. The intake is fine. We've replaced the brush guards, the common steel brush guards that were there with a zinc alloy, so the zebra muscles can't foul them, can't plug them up. And we use algae side in the intake to control the zebra muscles. They're, they're not gone, and they're not cheap, but we, we manage it that way. So every year, we have a team of divers go in the intake, do an assessment, and we, we know if our chemical dosage needs to go up or down, but we're, we're managing as, as that. So there's 11 pumps here. With the largest pump out of service, our pumping capacity is 90 million gallons a day. But again, as I mentioned before, 60 million gallons a day of that is relying on switchgear that's no longer supported and is, and is 46 years old. Also, these overhead electrical lines over there, that's, that's all the primary feed to this location. It's, it's not a good setup, so with our, with our rehab, we're going to put all that in a buried duck bank. So we'll be more resilient, more protected, should last a lot longer, even though we can't complain how long that's lasted, so. So once we get around the corner, it gets harder to talk, but if anyone wants to mosey over by the fence and see the intake, you're welcome to. I'll, I'll hang with the group and try to answer. Before we move, though, is there any questions over anything I've just said? Anything? Okay. All right.
...your presentation that was made to the board at the, made for the... And this is looking at...
Wired for Sound. So this is a presentation that was made, not by me, I was out at that time, but it's made by Sarah Stewart of our company to the Bell County Board, and it looks at plant, the condition of this plant, the improvements that need to be made to this plant that are critical, and it also looks at small incremental capacity expansions at this plant. The master plan that we completed in 2021 looked at potential capacity expansions for each of the customers. At that time, it was recommended that we expand this plant to 118 to 120 million gallons a day. Some of the customers didn't need it right of way. Other customers, like I believe WCID 3, needed the capacity relatively soon. Other customers showed, still showed some interest, so we looked at how to squeeze a little bit of capacity out of this plant, and we'll talk about how we can do that. But we also looked at some of the maintenance issues. In the master plan from 20 and 21, we had gone through and listed Level 1, most critical maintenance needs, Level 2 and Level 3. we had gone through and listed level one, most critical, uh, maintenance needs, level two and level three. So in this study, we actually put cost numbers to those improvements, to those, uh, maintenance issues. So I'm gonna step through here. Some of this you may have seen before in other presentations, but stop me if I get going too fast. I don't want to get everybody home on a reasonable hour. So this is, we're sitting on, uh, this is the site plan or the site layout of the Belton plant. We are sitting right here. If y'all been down to the raw water pump station, you were over here. I believe the R-Power presentation was in this maintenance building, right here. But let's go through some of the things. The water starts out in Lake Belton, which surrounds this plant, because it's on a peninsula. The raw water comes out of an intake here. The raw water pump station pumps it up to four plants. We're at the Lake Belton plant, but there's four plants inside the Lake Belton plant. Plant one was built in the 1950s by the Corps of Engineers for then Camp Hood, then Fort Hood, now Fort Cavazos. Plant one belongs to the Army, but the district operates it on behalf of the Army. 1960, oh, this is the sedimentation basins, these circles are sedimentation basins. The filters for plant one are just right outside this room, right outside this building. Plant two was built in 1964. Uh, it belongs to the district and its customers. The filters for plant two are right here, just to the, just that side of this building. Plant three was built in 1975, and the filters for plant three are located right there. Plant four was built in 2004, and it can, its filters are right here. In 2008, we came in and did some improvements to the raw water pump station, added the raw water electrical building, and added this 4 million gallon clear well and some high-service pumping. That increased the capacity from 80 million gallons a day to 90 million gallons a day. That was the last major improvement that was done at this plant. We have done some maintenance at plant two. We replaced the redwood baffles in the flocculation basin with concrete baffle walls. But other than that, that's been, oh, and we added this chlorine storage facility, which you'll see in a little bit. Each, there's a raw water pipeline that runs from the raw water pump station to each of these plants. We only show the one going to plant three because it's one that we will be looking at replacing. The raw water expansion, if we were gonna expand to 3, 6, or, you know, all the way up to 120 MGD. And when I say 120, we're not expanding by 120, we're expanding by 32, 120, just to make sure that my fast talking doesn't throw people off. So if we expand, either the expansions, we have to do something to the raw water pump station. We have to do something for the raw water electrical building to provide more power. And we're gonna replace the existing 36-inch pipeline that was built in 1975 with a new 48-inch pipeline. That's the raw water improvements. The plant one improvements for Fort Cavazos, we'll talk about what those are. And then we'll talk about improvements to the balance of the plant, both maintenance and things that have to be done for the 3 and the 6 MGD plant expansion. The raw water condition and capacity, some of these pumps date back to the 60s. Uh, what we're proposing to do for the expansion is to replace two pumps, number nine and number 11. They were put in in the 1970s, uh, so they're 50 years old, getting up there. The motors have probably been replaced a couple of times, but they're getting up to the point where they need to be replaced. They're capable, the can or the, what they sit in is big enough to allow expansion of those pumps to be included in the 120 million gallon day expansion. We're talking about replacing two of them, but they would be replaced for the 120 MGD expansion, regardless of whether we do 3 or 6. Because we're not gonna take out a 350 horsepower motor, put in a 400, and then two years later, take it out and put in a 500. We're gonna put in the 500 now. So it's possibly oversized for the 3 and the 6. The electrical improvements, if you were down there, you saw those draping wires that ran on the tilting poles that run down to the raw water electrical building. That's probably been there since 1950s. Uh, they're in not good shape. Uh, we're talking about for reliable, reliability reasons, to put them underground. So that in an ice storm, a windstorm, or just poles rotting, we don't lose our raw water electrical. And so that would be one of the improvements that would be done. For the expansion, we would need a new raw water electrical building. Whether it's 3 or 6, it will be sized for the 120 MGD expansion. It will be sized so that when the other pump improvements come in, a new building's not required, just new electrical equipment and new pumps. So we're also, this, again, I kind of mentioned earlier, this pipeline was put in in 1975. It's a material that it's made out of is such that it probably has about a 50-year life, and so we think it's probably up for replacement. And if we're gonna expand plant three at some point, we would replace it not with a 36, but with a 48. Plant one improvements, uh, plant one, uh, the flocculation basins have redwood baffle walls. The redwood is rotting out and needs to be replaced. These sludge collectors that collect the sludge, that the dirt and mud and algae that comes out of the water collects in the bottom of these basins, these things have been there since 1956. So they're 65 years, 70 years old, at 65 years old. They've been around for a long time. So it would look like in the future, these, those redwood baffle walls would be replaced with concrete walls that have holes in them, so it allows the water to flow through slowly and allows that flock to build. And then we would replace the old sludge collector mechanisms with newer sludge collector mechanisms, and then get another 50 years of life out of them. Plant one improvements in the master plan from 20 and 21, we had noted some corrosion in the filter pipe galleries. Uh, this time, we hired a corrosion engineering specialist who came in and assessed it and recommended replacement of some of the, uh, pipes that go through the concrete and some floor stands that hold the pipe up, that are both showing signs of fairly significant corrosion. So that's included in the maintenance part of the, uh, project. On the balance of the plant, that's plant two, three, and four, and the reasons we break out plant one separately, it belongs to Fort Cavazos. So they will pay for plant one. Uh, balance of the plant, there were some air blowers, air scour blowers that were put in 20 or 30 years ago. They were sized when the criteria for air scour was different. They're older, they're too small, we're recommending that be replaced. Probably seven or eight years ago, we consolidated the chlorine feed facilities for plant one and two into a nice new concrete building. State of the art at the time. Uh, we did not put in a chlorine scrubber at the time. Because of, we were told not to. Uh, we think it's a really good idea, this is a toxic gas. Those little cylinders right there, those little rectangles, each holds a ton of chlorine gas. If one of those breaks or something, you have a ton of chlorine gas that's leaking out. The building's enclosed, so it won't escape completely, but it does have doors, the doors aren't airtight, and so some of it would leak out. The scrubber sucks the chlorine out of the room and basically destroys it. So we're recommending that that be put in for health and safety for plant personnel and also visitors to Lake Belton. LAS is liquid ammonia sulfate. We add that to chlorine to make chloramines in the water. That's the disinfectant that's in the water that everybody drinks. Uh, these LAS tanks are old, you can see the sunburn on this one. When that fiberglass gets sunburned like that, it gets brittle and is subject to rupture. So we're talking about replacing these two tanks, they would be made bigger for the expansion. Sludge two, sludge collectors, we've already replaced the baffle walls here, we did that a few years ago. These sludge collectors date back to 1964, so they're almost 60 years old. Uh, they need to be replaced. I don't know if you can tell or not, but there's not very much room out here for an operator to work on that equipment. Uh, that, I've been working at this since 1979, and I have never seen one that small. So it needs to be bigger for the health and safety of the operations crew. Plus, the equipment's 60 years old. This is the one that causes a little bit of an issue, this is plant three. It was built in 1975, it has a capacity of 25 million gallons a day. This is the one, uh, we have a letter, the district has a letter from TCEQ saying this is in bad shape, you need to do something about it. The estimate to do something about it is about $5 million. But this is the plant that would be removed if we expand to 120 million gallons a day. It is the plant that, because there's four plants on the side, it is the one that's put on last. So they have plant one, two, and four, they're running almost all the time. When plant needs more flow, they will bring this one on because it is an odd duck. It tries to treat all the water inside this cone. You can barely make it out, the picture's not great, but there's a big cone out there. And instead of having rapid mix, flocculation, sedimentation in three separate basins, it tries to accomplish it all in one basin. This works great for muddy water, and if you're doing lime softening. We have neither muddy water nor are we lime softening. So it's not a good fit. 1975, I don't know, maybe they thought it was great new technology, but it has not been a good fit for this plant.
Is this the one that has a lot of rust on it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, all this, all these were supposed to be steel, painted steel. It should be the color of these walls, and they're all rusted out. They got holes in them in some places, which causes short-circuiting, and there's just a lot of problems there. Uh, again, another, this is at plant four, but another LAS tank replacement to get more capacity. Plant three and plant four has separate chlorine storage facilities. Plant three's is right here, plant four's is right there, I think. Both of them are separate, neither one has scrubbing. Uh, I'm not even sure that plant three is completely enclosed. Plant four is enclosed, very tight in there, not very much room. We are proposing to add a new facility that would take care of both plant three and plant four in a totally enclosed concrete building with scrubbing. And that way, all the chlorine facilities would be located right here, instead of one there, one there, and one there. Just consolidate that operation in one place. So that's on the list as a capacity expansion. Not all of these have to be added at one time, some of them could be postponed to the bigger expansion. The balance of the plant, there's also corrosion in filter pipe gallery two, three, and four. Some spot repairs, spool pieces and pipe stands again, showing some corrosion that needed to be addressed. Now, we're getting close to the end on the replacements. This is plant one, two, sludge transfer of the mud and stuff that collects on the bottom of the clarifiers gets pumped to sludge tanks or thickeners for de-watering. These are the pumps that do it, they're 20, 30 years old, and just are old and tired. Uh, the, one of the, we added a clear well right here in 2008. It was a 4 million gallon clear well. TCEQ requires that we provide 5% clear well, 5% of the capacity, plant capacity as clear well storage. So we're a 90 million gallon a day plant. We should have, at a minimum, 4.5 million gallons of storage. This one's, this one's four. The other two little clear wells that are underneath the filters, I think, are about a million and a half to 2 million total. So we have about 6 million gallons right now. We recommend 10%, because 5% is not a lot of volume. The plant operators will tell you what a blessing it is to have gone from 2 million gallons to 6 million, but what we're proposing to do with the expansion is to add another 4 million gallon clear well right there. That'll bring us to about 10. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be 10% of 120, but it would be closer than 6. There's just not, and the reason we don't do more is there's just not a lot of room up here. I mean, the peninsula that we are on, this, this clear well is basically at ground level at the top. It's 25 feet deep. On the, on the side by the road, the soil's basically right here. Over here by the cliff, all 25 feet of the side is exposed. It's just that steep, once you get to the tree line around the plant, it just drops off. And so there's really not much room to build up here, so we have to kind of put stuff where we can and fit it, make it fit with what we've got. Uh, this is some improvements at the plant three electrical building, 1975 vintage. The electrical equipment's 50 years old, you cannot find replacement parts. They are making parts to keep that plant running. So the idea would be to replace the MCC with the replacement, make it big enough for the expansion, so that it would be able to keep up. All that'd have to be done in the future is add a few more pieces of equipment, not replace it all again. Now, opinion for construction costs. This is the OPCC table, and we have it, we have this one and another one, and it's broken up in a couple of different ways. This is, we have it right now broken up kind of by process area. This is the raw water pump station. This is the plant one improvements, so this would be for Fort Cavazos. And this is the balance of the plant, this is two, three, and four. The C and the M, C means for capacity improvements, M means maintenance. So some of these are maintenance only. We weren't doing anything at plant one to increase the capacity. All we were doing was taking care of old equipment, replacing baffle walls, replacing sludge collectors. Over here, a lot of it is maintenance, this air scour, miscellaneous chlorine repairs. Some of it's capacity, the new chlorine storage facility, which is a pretty major expense, is capacity. The new clear well is a capacity issue. So there's a few that are strictly capacity, a lot of this is maintenance. This column here is the pure construction cost. This is how much it costs for concrete, the equipment, labor, but it does not include overhead and profit or all the equipment that has to sit out here to actually build the plant. It doesn't include contingencies. We're making estimates in 2023 for work that's gonna be done in '24, '25, and '26, so it includes inflation to get to those points. Also includes engineering and financing. So to sell bonds, to get financial advisors, to get bond counsel, all that. This is a, this is the all-in cost. So you can see there's a pretty good difference between 48 and 56, so adds up. The next slide shows it a little bit different, oops, double trigger. Uh, this shows just the maintenance costs, so the raw water pump station maintenance improvements, the plant one, which would be Fort Cavazos. Uh, there's some combined improvements associated with, I think, the LAS tanks and the blowers, and then the remaining maintenance items. So this would be maintenance only, and would be spread out between all the customers who use this plant, which are all the customers of the district. Uh, the 3 MGD capacity expansion, additional work at the raw water pump station, the plant three and four scrubber and other improvements at that facility. I'm sorry, this is the new facility, the new chlorine facility. And then allowance for the hydraulic improvements. And then to get to 6 MGD, these same improvements plus the 4 million gallon clear well, and it looks like the raw water line modification. So for the 3 MGD expansion, it's about $13 million. For the 6 MGD expansion, it's about, it's 27.6. Schedule, we are in the concept design phase, we're here in almost July. District sells bonds and moves forwards, we start preliminary design. Final design, this electrical procurement, some of the electrical gear, when we were doing the estimates, was estimating over two years to get electrical gear. So what used to take 16 to 20 weeks is now taking 28 months. It's, still got COVID floating around in it, I guess, I don't know. But we want to pre-purchase this, and then this would be the bidding phase where we actually take bids for doing the construction work, and this would be the construction wrapping up in late 2026 for that expansion. To go to the full 120 MGD, uh, similar type schedule, still buying the electrical gear early, but now the construction schedule pushes out into early 2028 because of the, just the amount of work that has to be done with demolishing the old plant, building the new plant, all while working around a working plant. And that's the end of the formal presentation, and we're happy to take any questions and see if we can answer.
I don't think there's any questions, but we truly appreciate you taking the time to go into detail about what's gonna start in now, in 2023, and project out for 2028. And you're at least giving us a cause, and it may be more than that as prices go up.
Right. So this didn't include the 120. I think that we made a presentation to the city council in Colleen about a year ago for the 120. And there's another presentation that includes that, but this one was kind of focused on the maintenance improvements and then the expansion by 3 and 6 for some of the customers who might be interested in that small expansion. And I appreciate y'all coming out and spending, walking around the plant on a day when it's 100 degrees, too, so. Mr. Kegel?
Go back to the, the cost right quick, sorry.
That one or that one?
Uh, previous, that one. So the 29 million, all the customers except for the plant one, which is all Fort Cavazos. That would be another 26. We all share that on a pad for use basis.
The board members and the general manager might be able to tell you a little bit more, but I believe what Ricky is wanting to do is to set up the maintenance stuff so that it would be in proportion to your plant capacity. So Fort Cavazos has 13 of the 90 or 14 of the 90, so the remaining 76. For example, Colleen has 39, so you'd be half of that, approximately. I'm not doing the math real fast in my head, but something like that.
Then the expansion, the Three and the Six, is that paid for just by the customers that need the...
Whoever signs up, the district. Say WCID Three needs two and nobody else wants to participate, then we would probably retool that to Two. And then they would be responsible for the Two MGD expansion. If Belton says, Mr. Listy and the Belton crew say, "Hey, we're still in for Four," and we do the Six MGD expansion, then WCID Three would pay two-thirds... I'm sorry, a third, and Belton would pay two-thirds. All that's kind of on the table and part of the reason why we're having this discussion today.
Where are the electrical upgrades incorporated on the table?
So the electrical upgrades are in... Probably in this raw water maintenance, raw water pump station maintenance, and go up one. So the raw water electrical, so the total is 17.4 for the mechanical, the water line, and here. Some of that's capacity, so like the raw water line kind of comes out of there. So out of the 17, you drop five out of it, and you're down to 12. And there's also some improvements in the mechanical part and in the electrical building. So when we take the capacity parts out, the remainder is the eight and a half for the maintenance of the... Most of that's getting the line buried in the new raw water electrical building.
And that's one of the concerns that I have. Would that be prioritized for folks to pursue funding for, or is that... They can...
That's something that the district would have to make a decision on, but, you know, if... I don't know how the district, the board, and the general manager want to move forward, if they would do just the maintenance or if they would do that only as part of an expansion project. That's something to ask the board members, what their feeling on that is, because I'm just a engineer.
I think Mr. Boyd's concern is how critical it is.
We have been recommending that go underground for probably five years, but it's never... It's not a small amount of money. And then the funding has always been an issue. So I think what the general manager and the board is trying to do is trying to prioritize some of these things that have been pushed off because of lack of funding, and that is an important one. So I just don't know if the board would fund 30 million amongst the customers or if it would wait until something else came up. I just don't know, Mr. Kegel.
Any more questions?
Just in general, so the expectancy, the components that we're replacing now, some of them were as old as 60 years old, you said in some cases, right? So when we do, just everything is completed 2028, what could customers expect for the life expectancy of the new components? Is it going to be another 60 years, or is that normal?
So the... So the... I would... It kind of depends on the piece of equipment, but like the pipeline? The pipeline, some say could be up to 100 years. I would say 70 to 100 years. The new pipeline would last that long. Some of this sludge collecting equipment that we're talking about replacing here, 50 years again. Now, there might be components like the motor that'll play out in 10 years, just like an air conditioner plays out every once in a while, but the big structures, the things that cost millions of dollars, as long as they're kept painted and stuff, would last 50 years. Let's see. Some of the motors don't last quite as long, depending on how well they're made. Like the pumps themselves typically last a long time. A lot of times, the motors have to be rewound just because they're sitting out in 110 degrees, sun running all day long, all night long, so they get pretty worn out. Mostly, it's the rotating equipment that wears out quicker, the motors and things like that, and pumps that spin real fast. But most of this is going to last, again, 30, 40, 50, 60 years, depending on the piece of equipment. The concrete baffle walls that we're talking about putting in here, 100 years. This concrete tank that we're talking about putting in, 70, 80 years probably because it's all concrete, mostly concrete. Yep.
And sir, one last question from me. When the construction starts, how would that affect that daily operation at the plant?
So the little expansions, the small expansions, you know, we would pull out two pumps and replace two pumps here. That could be done in the wintertime when the plant's operating at a lot less capacity. So that would be fairly simple. The raw water electrical building could be done independent of everything else that's going on. This... That pipe, the raw water electrical line that's going to be buried from here to here could be put in and made operational before they take the old wires down. The little expansion is mostly... We have a lot of filtration capacity here and a little bit of extra filtration capacity here, so most of the Three and Six MGD capacity expansion is expanding this pump station and then rerating the sedimentation basins here and adding this clear well.
So it won't affect the quality of water?
No. No. We would not let the construction improvements impede the ability of this plant to produce great potable water. I would say perfect, but that's kind of a hard target.
Quality.
Yeah, really, real high-quality water.
Close to perfect.
Yeah, close to perfect.
So the Stillhouse plant would also pull up some of the capacity so the Stillhouse plant could actually cover what is going to be down in this plant.
Yeah. So the Three to Six is easy, relatively easy. Taking this guy out to put in the bigger plant expansion is the one that's a little bit more complicated because we lose 25 million gallons a day when we take this guy out. And so instead of having a 90 million gallon a day plant, now we got a 65 million gallon a day plant. Now, Ms. Blankenship said we have a 17 MGD Stillhouse plant that's able to take care of a lot of city Colleen's needs, and so losing this, we have a little time to make that happen. As the cities continue to grow and water demands continue to grow, we could take that out, and I think I mentioned before that there's a window for that because when we get to the point that we can't lose a 25 MGD increment, then we're kind of... It gets a lot more complicated because it takes so long to get this stuff done. Again, I'll... See if I can find it. Oops, one more. So the schedule, when we decide it's time to start, let's say, just do the months. We start here in 2023, we're not done until 2025. It's four and a half years.
Help everybody understand this is separate from everything we've been saying.
Yeah, this is the big expansion.
This takes out which plant?
Plant Three.
It takes out Plant Three, wipes it out, and you build back.
You take out 25 MGD and you add 50, or 55, actually. So this is the really big expansion that basically uses all the capacity, all the footprint that this site has to offer. Also takes all the... When you were down at the raw water pump station, the raw water intake may have been pointed out to you. It's that round structure out in the lake. We did a hydraulic model on that several years ago, and it and the tunnel are good for about 120 million gallons a day. So that's why 120, you'll see 120 come up over and over again. That's kind of the target maximum capacity for this footprint.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
Last one before we get to 7:30. The VRA Brazos River Authority has the Bell House project that they're going to be working towards. Is there any impact from this on that or from their projects?
Should not be. At one point, we were actually working with them to try to use some of our facilities to help move that project forward. Couldn't... Deal couldn't be made. So they're building their pump station somewhere else. The yield of Lake Belton, I think it's 80 million gallons a day or something like that. We have 39 or so of it. They have 30,000 or 30 MGD also, so they're just going to be taking their yield and taking it to Stillhouse. Now, will it lower the levels in Lake Belton? Yes, it will. As the state of Texas grows, all the lakes are going to see that happen because it's just more people needing more water, and it's not getting wetter.
So your improvements, the TCEQ say make these improvements or just wear and tear?
So the...
Special opinion on these are some things that we see.
So the maintenance improvements are mostly wear and tear. The one that might be, TCEQ, I said something about the... There was some blowers. The blowers at Plant One and Two, when they were sized, they were sized at a much lower rate than we use today. I don't know if that's so much TCEQ or just good design practice, but that might be the only one that's TCEQ. Plant Three, the district did get a letter from TCEQ saying you need to fix Plant Three. And so the question becomes, do you fix Plant Three and spend $5 million fixing Plant Three only to tear it down in four or five years?
Right. And the reason why fix Plant Three?
So if we need to use Plant Three, we have a letter from TCEQ that says, "Fix Plant Three" because it's... All the equipment's rusting out and not doing very well. So TCEQ says you need to replace that equipment to use it. If we replace it and then in five years, we come in and do the expansion and take out Plant Three, then we have spent $5 million. We have not been a good steward of the public's money. So this is Plant Three. It's the one that has the really rusted equipment inside. But when we expand the plant to 120, we demolish this plant and build a much bigger facility right there.
But we still use Plant Three?
They use it only when they need it right now. They use Plant One, Plant Two, and Plant Four first, and if the plant needs more water, then they bring on Plant Three because it doesn't do as good a job.
All right. Any more questions? All right, well, sir, once again, we thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Spending a lovely Wednesday evening here at the district's Lake Belton.
We... City Attorney, can we close out here?
Yes, we're not going to do anything else after this, right?
No. I said you can turn it off. All right. Well, thank you all for coming. Mr. Gary, your staff, and WCID One, your board members, thank you. It was a blast in council, but it is 7:31. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. So we have a motion by council member of board to adjourn. We have a second by council member Solomon. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.